All right, good evening. We're gonna call the city council meeting for January 2024 to order with the declaration of a quorum. We're gonna excuse councillor Myers and councillor Duran. Please join me in the fireplace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hopefully, everybody's okay with their newly assigned locations. Just for the audience's awareness, every year we mix up the location of where the councils are. It gives everybody a different perspective, and they get to sit next to different folks, and they have different things that happen in different positions, so it changes it up a little bit, so councillor Harden always doesn't have to be the one leading off at the first vote. All right, there's a change this evening? Mr. Schmitt?
Yeah, two items. One is the addition of the school district updates, and then we would like to reorder from what was originally published, basically so we can address all the budget-related items first, and then we'll go to the other action item afterwards. So just move what was item A down to the bottom of the resolutions section.
So moving item 8A, is that right?
Correct.
Resolution 2303 till average 8F?
Yes.
Are there other changes?
No.
All right, so we're at our first opportunity for presentation, and first up, Mr. Bacon, Assistant Superintendent for the School District.
Well, good evening. All right. Mr. Primmer, hopefully you got your stopwatch ready. We'll see if I can't beat the dead clock.
Okay.
Well, Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. We got everybody back in session and going strong, just like, well, I could blink a bit of eye. Tomorrow, we have our mental health session on suicide prevention being held at Rocky Heights, so doors open at 5:45, and there'll be dinner served for the first 50 people that arrive. And again, this is no cost to anyone, and anyone is welcome. So you can also register on our district website. A video link will be provided for you there if you don't want to attend in person. Also, previous sessions, presentations are accessible on our district website for folks that weren't able to make the first couple. So again, this is just our opportunity to work with the Cook Center and be able to provide resources to our families on how to talk with the kids about suicide prevention. So we're trying to start that start. Doors open at 5:45, and then it'll start at 6:30?
At Rocky Heights.
At Rocky Heights. Also happening this month, we'll be hosting a vaccination clinic on January 18th at the high school from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And so that's for any students grades K through 12 that are missing their vaccinations, vaccines. They can come in there and get vaccinations. No cost to the parents or guardians, and families with health insurance are asked to make sure they have that insurance information with them when they arise. Exclusion Day is on February 21st, and any students following that date that don't have all of their vaccines up to date will not be able to attend school until we can get that taken care of. So that's why we're making a big push every year, to make sure everyone's up to date with what vaccinations that are required. End of semester's coming up, so January 25th. That following Friday, the 26th, is non-student day for staff, or for students. Staff will be in session, and then the semester will begin again on the 29th, on Monday. So we've got a board listening and learning session coming up on the 29th, and we've got the high school play, Seven Brides for Seven Brothers, that are gonna be performing in February. It'll be on the 9th, and they've got multiple showings that'll be available, and we'll have that information out on our website, and we'll do a press release, we'll have information out to families. So also, the Hef salmon and beef dinner auction is coming up on February 3rd. You can get tickets at the district office. Those are $50 a ticket, so that right there is a blast into 2024.
Hef, Hermiston Education Foundation.
Yep.
Okay, so their annual fundraiser, raising funds for?
Classroom. Classroom, for students, scholarships, basically anything that they can do to help support students.
Great, and that is February 3rd?
February 3rd. And then before we get out of here, January, every year, is School Board Appreciation Month, and so schools are recognizing board members throughout the months, and thanks for the great pay that they receive by volunteering to be on the school board, like a lot of other people that might be in the room here. So, and so our board members are Chair Sally Hansel, Vice Chair Bonnie Luisi, Second Vice Chair Dane Carter, and then board members, make sure I don't miss anybody, Lily Gomez, James Hurst, Karen Sherman, and Terry Vanderstel. So a big thanks to them tonight, they were honored tonight at the board meeting that's taking place right now.
Well, there we go. Please pass along our appreciation for their service and dedication to the school district and the kids and the community, because we appreciate them and their volunteerism.
We shall.
Any other questions from the council? No? Thank you, Mr. Bacon. I'm good. All right, now we're up to our second presentation. Oregon Department of Transportation, Jacob's Engineering. Mr. Schmitt?
Yes, so, ODOT.
My name is Blake. I'm a participant in this area, and also, we will provide Aaron with an engine to help understand.
So?
Can I just share my screen? Everybody hear us fine?
So Blaze, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Blaze, can you hear us?
Okay, we can, we can hear you, you're a little scratchy.
Lot of background noise. Maybe one of you turned your light.
So this project will not expose the, um, around stations. It's very quick, our project.
Our project, this isn't, this isn't, aren't gonna work. Can you interrupt?
Okay.
Can he see us? Yeah, she needs a mic, or mute her mic.
Sorry, Blaze, we're having a hard time hearing you, and your presentation didn't, it disappeared. So if you can share your screen again, and then we're gonna leave Aaron muted, we think it's background, or back, feedback from her microphone, and we're gonna turn to your microphone back on.
Is it possible to share the post-photos of this thing?
Okay, how about now?
Much better.
Okay, great, sorry about that. So yeah, this project is part of, part of the state's program to improve and upgrade ADA curb ramps throughout the state. In our presentation tonight, we'll do a quick project overview, and go over schedule, and our, and summarize the proposed improvements. If there's any questions that come up, feel free to interrupt me and go ahead and ask me, keep this fairly informal ones to go along. So this particular project, this particular project involves curb ramps. Throughout the area, we have improvements in all of the communities shown on the screen here. Most of the improvements are the most number of ramps, of course, are in Hermiston, and there are along two corridors in Hermiston. We are looking at improvements along US 395, we're also looking at improvements along Route 207. Now, just due to the complexity of some of the ramps and the number of signalized ramps on US 395, those improvements will happen at a later date. We're actually splitting the job into two different construction packages, and the improvements on 395 are part of that second construction package, which won't be advertised or awarded until 2025. So most of the discussion tonight will focus on the improvements on Route 207, and the schedule for those improvements is advertisement and award in April of this year, with construction starting in mid to late summer of 2024. We anticipate construction to end around the same timeframe, mid to late summer of 2025. We have improvements at these, at these intersections listed on the screen here, so as you can tell, there's a good number of intersections that are gonna be touched by this project on Route 207. Any questions so far? Now, I would like to just ask council that, that there's a preference here, when this packet, in this presentation, we provided this to city staff, so it will be distributed as needed to the city council after this meeting. Is there a preference? Would we like to go through each of these intersections and get a look at what the improvements are here? Is that something that we'd be interested in doing? Or would it be better just to kind of discuss in general some of the, some of the reasons for the project, and, and just lightly touch on impacts throughout the area?
I think, yeah, most of us probably agree that option two is the most preferred.
But if we could get a copy of?
Yeah, we can get you a copy of the PowerPoint.
Could you hear that, Blaze?
Yeah, what I heard was just a brief overview of the improvements, they're not necessarily going to be real side-by-side.
Correct, yeah, and the impacts that will happen to the constituent landowners.
So yeah, so the, so the reason for these improvements, right, are, are a lot of these ramps are, are not quite meeting the standards outlined in, in the ADA requirements, right? So across, although the ramp might be in excess of what it should be, or the dimensions of a certain part of the ramp aren't, aren't large enough to accommodate somebody in a wheelchair. So the, the purpose for the project is to go through these locations and remedy those, remedy those issues. There are some impacts to city utilities, primarily some, some water meters, fire hydrants, few storm drain pipes throughout the area. Those are improved, those are modifications that our contract will take care of. We've been in coordination with the city staff on what those impacts might be, and they've been great working with us on letting us know what features are out there and, and what we need to do to accommodate city needs. In terms of traffic impacts, we don't anticipate any significant traffic impacts to vehicles. Some of these intersections will be close to pedestrians for, for the duration of the improvements, however, there will be alternative routes provided. That's one of the requirements in our contract that, that contractors need to provide, accessible route for pedestrians around these improvements. There might be short-term lane closures on the, for, you know, several minutes here and there, as equipment is unloaded and such, but we really don't anticipate significant lane closure or anything that should significantly impact traffic. Any questions so far?
No.
Okay, so I think, I mean, with that said, like I said, construction is anticipated to start later this summer, midsummer, and go throughout the rest of this year, there likely be a winter shutdown, and it'll pick up again in spring. If there are any, I should mention, we are currently in final design of the project. If there's any comments that the city has, and, and, you know, beyond what city staff have already provided, we're happy to take those into account and, and incorporate them as, as we can. But with that, you know, I'll turn it over to Aaron, and if she has anything else to add, I think we can, we can wrap the presentation up here, we just wanted to make sure that the council is, is aware of the improvements, is aware of the schedule for the improvements, and the impacts to, impacts of the travel involved before this job hits the ground this summer.
Thanks, Blaze. You did a great job on the overview of the project. I don't have anything additional to add, I think you covered everything nicely. So if there's any questions from the council or city officials, we'll be happy to answer.
Yes, I have a question for you, Aaron. You know, a couple years ago, we went through and improved, or ODOT went through and improved all the intersections that seemed like on 395, and made them more accessible for handicap. And so are we going through and just tearing all those out again, and then rebuilding them, or what, what does that look like?
I'm sorry, it was breaking up, so I had a, I only heard a little bit of what you asked. So there was, a couple years ago, you said they went through and remediated ramps along 395? Is that what?
Correct.
Okay. I what, ooh, I'm not aware of that project. This, we have had several projects throughout ADA's life, and so if, due to the volume of curb ramps that were in the, in the lawsuit that needed to be remediated, they were broken off, and so, Blaze, are you aware of the projects that they're talking about, that happened a couple of years ago?
Aaron, Mark Morgan can answer, I think, that question.
Yeah, I think the project that the mayor's referring to, again, that was on 395. This project is really on Highway 207, so it's really just on Elm and on 11th Street. So most of those projects were on 395, though.
I thought they did mention that it was?
395 project, yeah.
Yeah, he did mention.
The vast majority of them are early on, 207.
Okay, so the ones that are on 395 were maybe intersections that weren't improved previously?
Correct.
Okay, that makes more sense. I just didn't want to see wasted taxpayer dollars going out there and tearing out ramps that we'd already just rebuilt, or they rebuilt, that were supposed to meet ADA standards at the time. Okay. Any other questions?
That's certainly not, that's certainly not the intention to go back and reconstruct something that was, that was pulverized and meets, and meets ADA requirements. Were only, were only upgrading ramps that did not currently meet ADA standards.
Okay.
And those ramps, those ramps go through inspections to ensure that they do meet the standards, so that, and it's a pretty rigorous inspection process, and, and so the, if they're out there and they do meet ADA standards today, we don't, we don't want to touch them. We only want to improve the ones that, the ones that we did, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, council? All right, I'm not seeing any other questions from the council, so thank you guys very much for the presentation.
Thank you, and you guys have a great evening.
Good evening. All right, we're gonna move on to the first opportunity in our city council meeting for citizen input on non-agenda items, so if there's an item on the agenda for this evening that you would like to speak to, we'll give you an opportunity at that point. But there, if there are items that are not on our agenda that you would like to speak to, please come up to the microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address, direct your comments to me, and try and limit them to less than five minutes.
Hi, good evening. Troy White, 785 East Oak Court. I'd like to talk about the urban growth boundary. I brought this up on the last meeting. We want to go into a little more detail this time. Right now, we can have growth in the urban growth if we can annex the properties. Currently, LaGrande is annexing 25 properties into their city limits. I have the article here. They reached out to every property owner, and 50% of them said yes, that's all you need is 50%, and then you can annex the properties without having votes. You don't have to vote to put it on the agenda for people to vote on it. You, yourself, are the ones that can vote to say. So we can bring in not only new housing, we can bring in industrial, we can bring in business, and we can bring in facilities like parks and utilities that are just sitting outside the city limits. This would increase the population growth, this would also increase more business, which I'm hoping to bring, currently working on something, have been for six years. If it comes to light, it'll be a big thing for Hermiston. So I'd like to see the city reach out to the property owners in the urban roads and ask them to annex. LaGrande used city water hookups to get them to annex free. So if the city can provide 50%, the first 50 people that wish to annex can get free water and sewer, that might be the, just the incentive to make it happen. So, once the properties are in the UGB, LCDC has no say, it's all of you that has the say, we don't have to go to them. If you look under Oregon annexation laws, 222.111 provides two ways to initiate city annexation of contiguous park territory. The city's legislative body may initiate annexation on its own motion, and the owner of the real property in the territory to be annexed may initiate such annexation. If you also look at the annexation law under Oregon 222.125, if a double majority consisting of all the owners of the land in the majority to be annexed, if 50% of the electors of the territory consent to the proposal to annex, no election is required in either the city or the territory to be annexed. So it looks like if we just reach out and ask, you might get some people that want to come in. So that was what I wanted to bring up tonight, and hopefully help promote that a little bit. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Troy. I appreciate it. Thank you. Others?
Hello, my name is Nick Ridley, and I live at 1003 South West Olive Court, Hermiston, Oregon, and I'm here to comment on the budget issues that we are currently looking at. First off, I'd like to thank Byron Smith for being with me after Friday, held a comment at our last meeting, and taking time out of his day to answer some of my questions. As Byron will show you shortly after I speak, after we met, he went through and reviewed the budget that's been presented to this council several times at this point, and determined that the numbers were significantly off, and that we are actually nowhere near the $170,000 surplus that has been represented for the last few months if we choose to adopt all of the proposed solutions. I hope at a minimum, we can all agree that a random citizen should not have been the one to catch this. I also hope that we can agree that those numbers should have been right before county law was held, and before a public survey was sent out asking for their opinion on the proposed solutions. On that note, I don't want to complain without offense. The effort you're input, I have submitted an application to fill one of the three open budget committee seats, and if selected, we'll do what I can to help make sure the numbers are right going forward. In looking at the agenda, it appears you all intend to vote, or I believe consider some of the proposed solutions despite not yet having been presented the actual final numbers on them. I also find it concerning that after I gave my public comment at the last meeting, the council was presented with and approved spending $2 million to buy land from the city's water budget cash reserves. I'm, I'm pretty confident that I'm not the only one who would scratch their head when they hear that we're approving spending $2 million while at the same time being told that we don't have enough money to cover our status quo budget. Furthermore, I find it very frustrating that we are considering increasing the city's water rates to address this proposed, or potential deficit, while at the same time saying we have enough cash reserves from that same department's budget to buy the land. But I guess the public safety fee does have a nice ring to it. If you choose to implement public safety fee or the business license fee, I highly recommend that you do what you can to ensure that the police department gets discretion over every public safety dollar collected, whether that goes towards new hires or not. And if you implement the business license fee, you provide those business owners and operators with some tangible benefit, and I do not believe those business owners would consider being on a list a tangible benefit. If that is not an option that you choose to go down, I highly recommend that you implement a two- to three-year hard sunset on these, these fees that you're going to impose on the citizens. Doing that would prevent a long-term burden being placed on the citizens for something that I've seen presented as a short-term problem, after you factor in the potential earnings that will come once the franchise fees from Amazon kick in. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you. Others?
Okay. Yeah? Virginia Ron Garcia, 435 East Sunset Drive, Hermiston, Oregon. I'm just here like, and, I come up here just to invite everybody again to the Martin Luther King Peace hall that is taking place on January 15th. It should start at 12, and we're having a gentleman, a great gentleman, talk to us, and he's gonna be talking about a poem that he wrote, which is called "The Shape of Your Heart." Will be started the program at 12, and then also it will be available through soon. Thank you. Or does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Virginia, where is that program starting?
Oh, it's gonna be here.
Right in front of City Hall?
Right.
Noon, people, they want to walk around?
Yes, we're gonna be.
Downtown, and then the program will be here in City Hall.
And this, right, afterwards.
All right, thanks for coming, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Others? Okay. We're gonna move on to consent agenda items. There's two items on the consent agenda, do we need to pull any of those? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on consent agenda items A or B? Also seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A and B as presented?
So moved, second?
Then moved by councillor Primmer, second by councillor Harden, that we approve consent agenda. agenda items A and B as presented. Local?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. On to number eight, which we rearranged, so A is going to be after F now, so we're on B, overview and outreach by City Manager Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to give you the input or the input that we received and then ask for feedback and consideration on the recommendations. So the process that we've gone through started in June 2023 with the adoption of the budget with a kind of a short-term goal of an examination of the general fund. That started nearly immediately. Department fund or department budget review started, completed in November. Town hall meeting was held at the end of that month. And then there was an online survey that ran from November 17 through December 15. And as was suggested, we did attempt to try to get that out in utility bills. We're not able to get them logistically in all the mailed versions, but we did send out a QR code to all those accounts that pay electronically, so. And based on the feedback, there are a number of themes. Accountability, making cuts. They like some recommendations, didn't like others. Some don't like it but wanted to get community. There was some feedback that if you're adding officers, make sure that they can do what you want them to do or that their hands are not tied. And then there was a strong theme, especially in kind of the online survey results, too, that the city should consider reexamining the decision on cannabis sales and then have an opportunity to tax that activity. I'm going to go through each of those. So to start with. On accountability. So first, the city council recognized this issue, established a process, public cooperative. Initially, we had two budget committee meetings to start the discussion, then we took seven-plus months to do an in-depth review of the general fund operations. And all those recordings are accessible for people to go back and listen to each department and the presentations that were made. And then from accountability to staff, you know, I had a performance evaluation in August. I'm the only employee that the council hires, and so that was a part of that discussion. It's a personnel issue, and so it's not something that necessarily was broadcast widely in the state. Second item. Make cuts. And now, these are just some examples. If we only make cuts and tried to make up the $900,000 gap. So to start with, if you just hold the police budget separate and you don't add the three officers, that's the first piece. Then if you want to take a look at the pool, cut that service down to three days a week, you're talking about potentially a one full-time plus about 50 seasonal jobs, and that gets you to around $250,000. Again, these are high-level numbers. We didn't dig into exactly what the operations would look like to do this, but this gives a picture of the depth of a cut that would need to get to that dollar amount. If you wanted to remove about a half of the youth recreation programs, reduce community events by three-fourths, then you're talking about a full-time position, potentially 50 part-time jobs, and that's about $300,000 from the recreation budget. Then from a library standpoint, if you go down to three days a week of service, you're talking one or two full-time plus one or two part-time positions, and that gets you to about $300,000 from the library. So as we, as the council looked at each department, I think there was a discussion and recognition of the services they provide, and you know, those are the things that were considered as far as whether those types of cuts were acceptable or not. And so the cuts that we did propose and that have been out for discussion is approximately $200,000, and this is a little larger number than we initially talked about as we were looking at it, as the general fund departments took a deeper look at what might be able to be reduced in their non-personnel spending. And then a cut of about $340,000 from the street maintenance budget. So the next theme item. Like some recommendations, didn't like others, but as we, I think, expected, and there's not many that are interested in paying more. But some of the feedback in, on one side was about 47% said that additional law enforcement officers should be paid for by a combination of businesses, visitors, and residents. 75% were in favor of an increase to the TRT. And if you take out the neutral responses, planning department fee increases were supported 42 to 32, and business license fee was supported 42 to 33, again pulling out the neutral responses. But on the other side, only 24% were in favor of public safety fee, and 66% were opposed. And only approximately 20% were in favor of cutting street maintenance funds with approximately 60% being opposed. There were just a couple people that did testify in person about being in support of that fee and maybe being willing to go higher, but that was not what came out of the survey results. Then the next item, if you're adding police, make sure that their hands are tied or not tied. So there's really nothing in the survey that really gets to that point, but some of the talking points around that were, you know, a little over 50% of the respondents added about were in favor of adding police officers. 59% they wanted additional services from the police department. And then there were many concerns expressed, both in the comments in the survey as well as public comment in person, concerned about safety in the parks and around the library. And then the final theme that I wanted to touch on tonight was. Should we reexamine the decision on cannabis sales and taxation? It was mentioned by several of the speakers in person. And then in the survey, almost 75%. Okay, in the question, and I'll show you the direct question in just a minute, but basically there were a number of local option taxes that would, that could possibly be put to a vote to consider, and cannabis tax was the only one that got any level of support. 75%. No other option. The none was the only other option that got more than 25% in that question. So it wasn't any other, any of the others that were considered. Now, wanted to mention 425 responses to the online survey, and then were 17 responses to the survey when we were here at the town hall. We had a computer out in the lobby that people could take the survey. So here's the results to the five questions that we sent in the survey. So rate each of the following options to increase revenue or make cuts. You, I mean, again, you have a wide range, so on the second one from the bottom, increase the local hotel motel tax. The yellow and blue is by far the majority. If you go up to public safety bill fee on utility bills, the blue and the orange are, again, the majority of the responses. So what's, which city services would you like to see increased for the public? Police department was way above any of the other departments, though you see Parks and Rec and Community Development both had some substantial support. What should the city prioritize when updating its budget for 2024? Police department, their public safety officers got a large percentage of that. Creating long-term revenue streams got a large percentage. And then reducing services and costs also was significant along with maintaining city service fees. So then, if the city seeks additional revenue to fund public safety officers, where should it come from? And this is, the yellow was some from each, and then you can see the other half basically is a mix of the different options, with the residents being the low, small slice of that pie. Are you in favor of Hermiston voters considering any of the following through a local ballot measure? Again, there you can see the local cannabis tax giving a strong, strong support. So based on those feedback and the items that we discussed, the cuts, cutting approximately, again, these are all annual numbers, $340,000. That could be implemented as soon as the council made that decision. Materials and services, that could be implemented upon a budget amendment adoption. So to finish this fiscal year, some changes would be, would need to be made, and then those would be carried into a future budget year. On the revenue side, planning department fees, again, those could immediately be implemented upon council approval. Transit room tax increase would begin as proposed in the ordinance tonight, April 1st. Business license fee, we would propose that start January 1st, 2025, so it wouldn't impact this partial budget year, but it could impact the next year's budget. And the law enforcement staffing fee, that would, that we would propose that could start March 1st, 2024. And then the cops grant, all that would need to be implemented is the incorporating that into the budget that can be done as supplemental as well as for future years at budget adoption. And then the final area, this is a kind of a new recommendation based on the feedback. You know, I would propose that we hold a work session in February to talk about the cannabis question a little more. I don't think we've really provided a lot of detailed information about it. And if that were to take place in February, that would still be enough time to, if the council wanted to refer it to the ballot, or if a citizen group wanted to gather signatures, it could be put on the November election ballot. And so these are the recommendations. And then, as the gentleman referred to earlier, here's this, the impact. So the number that he was talking about is the bottom line number there in the green column. In the prior budgets or prior spreadsheets that you've seen, that was approximately $770,000. And basically, the problem in the spreadsheet is that one of the revenues was counted twice. And so it was, it was so that made it inaccurate. There's still, you know, there was some concerns by some of the public that $170,000 was too much, you know, why don't we not implement one of them? So this really kind of cuts the line pretty close, and I appreciate the opportunity to, or the chance to talk with Mr. Ridley and the things we're able to discuss, I think were valuable. So this is the kind of the updated numbers. Now, from a next step standpoint, there's consideration, possible adoption of the items proposed tonight, or maybe you give us direction to do something else or to go back and reconsider some of those that were proposed tonight. And then whatever is adopted would eventually need to be incorporated into a budget amendment so that then those revenues and expenses could be reflected more accurately according to what's been adopted. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Very entertaining comments.
So, Mr. Smith, if I understand what we're doing tonight, you're providing overview right now, okay?
Right.
Council can ask questions, public can ask questions, finding the stuff that was presented. And then there's no action on this report.
Correct.
But if the council chooses to give direction tonight, we're going to move forward with some of these resolutions.
Right, I mean, the.
Or ordinances.
This was the best way that I could give kind of a general overview feedback on all the items, and then each, you know, each action item could be discussed and direction could be given individually based on those.
Okay. I have two questions specifically, you know, if you don't mind, I ask Chief Edison a question. Chief Edison, I have a question about your hands being tied in budget decisions, and I'm not sure the council has ever given you direction or tied your hands and how you spend your resources. So I'm not sure what that means, and maybe I'm not understanding.
I think it was more hands tied in their actions to enforce the law. I think that's what I understood that feedback.
That's how I interpreted.
Yeah.
Comments, right? We don't have, yeah, I guess I'm still confused because we don't have any choice in that matter. I guess I'm.
Well, I think that's what they were trying to say, why add more officers when we, our hands are tied by someone else to do and implement the law? For example, I think mostly referring to homeless issues in the parks.
Measure one.
Camping, public camping, those types of things. Jason, would you agree with this?
Yeah. So the second question I had had to do with cannabis tax, and I'd seen some of that, and maybe this will come up in a discussion at a later time. Cities saw that as a potential additional revenue stream for their communities. What we have seen over time, in my experience, has been that it's been clawed back significantly, like zero dollars going into cities' coffers now. So do you know percentage-wise what cities are charging and, you know, how much they're actually getting now is in their coffers?
Well, it's kind of twofold, and I would agree, that's why I proposed to do a little bit more discussion about it because we haven't, we didn't dive very deep into getting actual numbers. But so cities can have a 3% rate that's their own, and I would imagine those revenues have not necessarily changed jurisdiction to, you know, they're, they're pretty steady. But the revenue that's shared by the state, there's a state tax on cannabis, and I'm very comfortable saying that those revenues have gone down significantly. And I, but I don't know what that percentage is. We need to dig into that and get somewhere.
So maybe that could be part of the future.
Correct. Yes.
What other questions from the council about what was presented? Yeah, Councilman.
First, I'm just curious, which number was counted twice?
It was the $340,000 street cut, cut to the street department. I had put it on both.
So 16 was what?
Yeah.
And then I didn't get enough of a glance at the, that final spreadsheet. I would like to see that again, besides just the final number. You mentioned, and I'm curious if this is, how this is different, if at all, from a public safety fee, some other $5 monthly fee for staffing for police industries?
Another comment that was made in the town hall was, you know, public safety often means police and fire, and so just to be clear, I retitled it to be law enforcement staffing fee. That's more clear exactly what we're attempting to do. I mean, the council can.
That's where the funding that's proposed for would come from.
Yes.
Are there any questions for the council? Yes. Yes, Councilperson Peterson?
So looking at some of these that we are looking at possibly passing this evening, you know, changing one of them is going to obviously then change the recommended budget because that's based upon the idea of, you know, putting into effect what's in front of us.
That's correct.
Can you go back to the page where you, your recommendations were? So I think what Councilperson Peterson was looking to is if we adjust one of the revenues on here, then we would potentially have to increase one of the cuts.
Potentially, right.
Gotcha. And maybe for, just kind of a reminder, I think it's very difficult to understand public budgeting. And we're talking mostly about general fund dollars here, right?
Correct.
This is not our total budget. This is general fund budget. And so when we talk about water, wastewater, those are not part of the general fund budget.
Correct. So though they're what we would call an enterprise fund, they operate more like a business than the general fund does. And so their rates are set to pay for the expenses it takes to operate those, those utilities. And so when, you know, a, a different form of investment we're choosing, I mean, that's what, you know, investing in property can be. And we have money saved up to pay for projects so that we're not borrowing money, increasing the cost of the project through interest. And so some of those projects, we've been saving for 10 years and, and the replacement, the, the need for replacement's going longer than, than we had originally planned. So we have money that's waiting to do these projects. And so that's the, I mean, that's the difference as far as the, being the investing in property versus investing in the local government investment pool.
So we could take that two million dollars that we bought that property from the water treatment fund and use it to supplement the general fund?
That, that would be going way outside of the council's policy in the past. I mean, it's, I don't, it's not illegal, but it, it wouldn't be the policy of the council. And it would really burden the rate payers, you know, the rates eventually have to come up to make up for those projects that needed to be, to keep the system functioning.
So right now, the water and wastewater pay for the infrastructure and the repairs and the ongoing maintenance of water and wastewater only?
Correct.
Just, you know, it gets very complicated. You have these different buckets of money and it looks like you got a bunch of money in one bucket and not enough in another. Why can't you just mix the buckets? And I think that's where it gets very, very complicated.
Right. And it, I, I agree, it is, it is not, it's not as simple as, as, you know, maybe a home budget or a business budget might look like.
And so the funds for our general fund budget, they come to us in the form of property tax revenue?
That's the largest single source, yes.
Okay. And so those funds then are reallocated for public services like public safety, library, parks and rec, and city administration?
Correct.
That's, that's the majority of what, what general fund goes to pay for?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman?
I have a few questions. One is, as city council, are we able to rewrite our budget as far in terms of, say, like the water has a surplus of three million, and you're saving it in case something breaks down? Can we rewrite it to where we take out of that, a portion of it as a city council so that we would be able to do that in the future if we have a problem where we are short funds?
Sure. That, that would, it would be not my recommendation to do that, but yes, the council could change the policy.
Okay. My next question is, I would like to see line items on the planning department fees. So what was, I mean, what it is now and how much you're planning on increasing it because it just is planning department fees and I don't know what it's going to.
Right. That, that will be on item, somewhat of the later items. Item, Resolution 2302, there's a copy of the master resolution that, that has those fees. So we can go, we can look into those in more detail when we get to that point. Goodbye.
The transient room fee tax, I see that you only want to do one percent, recommend a one percent increase. And right now, I think it's at eight percent?
Correct.
And just go up to nine percent? That is still very low. If he, I've looked at several states to see how much theirs are, and it's much higher. I would like to see that if, if at all possible, that we go up to 10% instead of just nine or two percent. I don't think that would hurt anything personally. Because when people are going to travel, they're going to travel and they're going to stay in hotels. I've paid some high fee prices, much higher than 10%, let me tell you.
Right.
And that's the only one that I, yes, those two.
Yeah, the, the reasoning for the one percent versus two percent is there's a state law that requires a certain amount of that, those funds to be spent in certain ways. And so this is, the, the one percent maximizes that for the general fund operations. Going to the two percent would only go to, would be an increase of about a hundred and thirty thousand.
Totally.
That total instead of another hundred thousand. So from a marginal gain, that's why we chose that, but that, that doesn't limit what the council...
So you're talking about a certain percentage, once you go above a certain recoup dollar amount, you have to start spending more on tourism marketing and advertising?
Correct.
So your net gain is not as great by increasing additional one percent? Question, Councilperson Peterson?
So just in regards to the possible cannabis tax, because I have been reading many of the comments online, there's almost a feeling of, okay, this is going to be a quick fix. Of like, okay, you know, the council can put it on the ballot and people will vote on it. And great, then all probably fixed. It's like, but then you're still expecting a business owner to decide to set up shop here. And then they have to go through all the, jump through all the hoops to get that up and going. So it's not like, it's not a cash cow for the city. It's a, you're still waiting for a business to open and for them to, you know, start, you know, hopefully making a profit because we can't tax what doesn't exist. So for all that, you know, that might be part of the end equation, it can't be the whole thing. And that's something just, and I was reading some of the comments online, it's like, that's just a piece of things though.
Right. And just, just one item that we, we looked at, it was a fairly substantial vote against it when it initially was put before the voters. And then just recently, the, the psilocybin item was put before the voters and it didn't fare very well either. So, you know, it's, it's not an automatic that the voters are going to approve it. So that's, that's another piece that we can't control, the city can control.
That's a very good point, Councilperson Peterson, because you're probably looking at two years before you see any revenue from that, and we have a budget issue now.
Correct.
Yeah. So I mean, it's something that we could definitely look at as a future revenue stream, but it doesn't fix the problem today. Councilwoman?
I just had a comment. Thank you, Mayor, earlier for explaining where I have questions about budget. I think it, it does the public good to understand that there is, as representative, Smith would call it, different colors of money and, and different things that different colors of money can do and can't do. And so I, I appreciate those questions because the government budgeting is different and is very difficult. And it is a seatbelt curve, so I appreciate the councilors doing their homework to come before the public and make tough decisions like what we have to do today. I also want to thank the staff of, this has been a long time coming, like you mentioned earlier in your presentation, City Manager Smith, we've had seven plus months of reviewing every single department budget, having every single explanation that can come to us. And I really appreciate also constituents that have come here, that have given input, whether it's online or in person. And especially the gentlemen that also met with the city manager. I think this is a growing moment for our community. And I, I think all in those aside, what we want to do is just have the best product for our community. And so I, I thank you again for the presentation, the months of planning and your leadership on this one, City Manager Smith. So I look forward to talking about the details once we get to the resolutions.
Yeah, it's, Oregon's taxation system is not easy. It's very cumbersome, it's very difficult to understand. And, you know, it's across the board an issue for a lot of cities. A lot of cities are going through this right now. And unfortunately, all facing, not all, a lot of cities are facing significant budget cuts or challenges like us. And so it's not unique to Hermiston. It's unique to us because it's our problem and it's in our yard and it's our neighbors and our friends and ourselves personally that we're having to address and do this. But, you know, it's, it's a challenge across the state that we're all dealing with from a municipal government standpoint. I did hear though, in the survey, that public safety was important and community values our public safety officers. And they want to see less crime in our city. And they want to see less challenges from, you know, the issues that we face because we're short of officers. And I don't remember the statistic or the number, but I don't know that we've grown in officers in 10 years.
It's a little more, as far as patrol, you know?
Probably 2015 or 16, I think we might have added one or two in patrol. And population-wise, we've grown significantly. And we all know that it's not just the 20,300, there's a larger majority or a larger percentage of people that live in our UGB and, and the communities surrounding us that actually come into, into our community as well. And so as a region, the West Yvonneville County area has grown significantly. And I know we are more than 50% of the population of the whole county. And so Hermiston is the hub for that. And so with that comes policing challenges and public safety is super important. And so I think, you know, trying to address public safety and how we continue to support our men and women on the streets out there working and risking their lives for us, I think is important. And I'm glad we're addressing that and trying to figure out a way that we can support them in that. Are there any other questions or comments from the council before I open it up to public? Yes, Councilman Cuthbert?
Just for clarification, I think this may have been stated in the past, but just in order for us to even consider a tax on marijuana, it would first have to go out to the public to vote to allow marijuana sales to exist inside the city of Hermiston, correct?
That's correct. It, it probably could be done at the same time. I mean, you could have a one election item that would be dependent on the other. If one passed, then the other could pass. But if the first one doesn't pass, it doesn't matter what happens on the second one.
Perfect. And then I just had one thing based on the, that spreadsheet. If we go back to it, there are two items that I just need clarification for my understanding. So under additional recommended changes, you've got ads funding for three new police office positions for 370, and then you've got law enforcement staffing fee for 360. I'm curious what the difference between those two items are and where those funds are coming from on the first item.
So on the, the, the new positions are on the expense side as far as what it's going to cost for three new officers. And then the law enforcement staffing fee is on the revenue side. And, and so that would help to provide the revenue necessary.
Okay, no, I can see, okay, now I, okay, it's more clear for me now, thank you.
It's not separate revenue?
Yeah, I, those are all the decisions.
Other questions, council? Any public comment? Come on up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Josh Roberts, 1709, Dorothy, sixth place, evening. I wanted to talk briefly about this public safety fee or the law enforcement staffing fee and just to put my support behind it. I did take the survey and I found it interesting in the survey tonight that overwhelmingly public safety was important. And yet, the people who took the survey, and I don't know that they speak for the entirety of the city because it was only 400 and some people, said that they want somebody else to pay for it. Now, I was part of that committee that had to, you know, step up and say, we can't fund this right now. What I see here is I see a five dollar month fee. If my understanding is correct, the low income are already getting assistance to pay for their water bills, so they're likely going to be minimally affected. So the middle and upper income levels, they can afford this. We're talking about, well, depending on what kind of coffee you drink, maybe not even the price of a cup of coffee a month. Maybe it's, you know, a stone or, or whatever it, whatever it is, fill in the blank, fill in five dollars, and we're giving up one of those a month in order to support our, our law enforcement. When you call 911, you want somebody there. And just recently, this impacted me and my family as we had a significant event with a young child who was, you know, kidnapped, right? And I want to give my personal thanks to the police department for the rapid response in that. I want cops when we call. I think we all do. I think the survey was very clear about that, that we all want a police officer. Their hands being tied is not their fault. The state of Oregon has enacted laws that they have to follow. The courts, the appellate courts, the spring courts have enacted rulings that they have to follow. That doesn't change the fact if your car's broke into, you're going to want a police officer. Doesn't change the fact that if your loved one is hurt, you're going to want a police officer, or several police officers depending on the severity of it. So I just wanted to say that I think that the survey is very clear that the, the small pooling sample, I don't think, personally, I don't think speaks for, for all of us. And for such a low price, we, we get to fund these, these positions now. What I would reiterate, something I've said before, I would, I would caution the council in future years from saying, okay, you know, they've got, they've got this staffing fee, it's, it's generating $360,000 in revenue. And so in subsequent years, we're going to withhold funding from, from the police department. I, I can see that being an easy thing to do, but as you increase staff, you increase costs. The training costs go up, the personnel costs go up, the equipment costs go up. It's, it's the price of doing business. And, and we can say that about any of these, these areas. The street maintenance fee, for instance, we don't want to, to cut that forever because we've seen neighboring cities who've had streets in disrepair for decades. And so if that's adopted, that's something we need to, to consider is that we don't want to hamper that future growth. But I just wanted to say, first of all, how thankful I am to the police department, to the police officers behind us here. And just show some support because it really is a minimal fee, I think, for, for what we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Other questions? Council?
I have to wonder if part of the hands tied idea might not come from how tied up the courts have been recently in terms of moving cases through and people feeling like there has been accountability when it comes to certain crimes. And I know that since we have moved cases to city court, I believe that those wheels are turning a lot faster. And that will hopefully help people feel better than, because we'll see that, okay, there's accountability at the other end of the law enforcement is that. And, you know, I think that'll just bring the morale up as well because it'll be like, the officers will see, okay, yeah, something's coming out of the work you're doing besides, you know, yes, safety of the mo- you know, yes, safety of the moment, but then, you know, there's going to be, you know, consequences to the actions that took place. And so, you know, I think things moving in our local court a lot faster should help that along. So, at least, that's my take.
Others?
Are we allowed to ask questions or is it just?
Public comment?
Okay. My comment would be that the one line item from the last presentation to this one is not the only change to that column. I also very much sent the adding the additional police, but I also look at our budget and see that it's tight, and we have $251,000 of their recommended additional expenses that haven't been brought up as a part of this conversation. The additional changes from last time that column was presented to this one is that the $150,000 of staff cuts that was originally presented has now grown by $50,000. And the, which one isn't? The one from 90 down to 50, Capital Outlay. That has jumped all over the place. It has been $70,000, it's been $92,000, and now it is settled at $50,000 because random citizen decided to look at the numbers. I seriously suggest having deep conversations about what the true numbers are because you're working with other people's money. I 100% support adding police officers, but when you're working with other people's money, give the numbers right, please. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Vic's 100%, right? And I think that's why you guys take this job seriously every day. It's extremely challenging to be in the weeds as deep as we've gotten these last seven months. We've never done a diet like this. I'm not sure that we've had the time to do it in the past. We forced ourselves this year to do that because of the emergence of the issue. But maybe it's a process we need to do more often. And, you know, we hire professionals to manage our resources and to advise us and give us recommendations. But, you know, we also need to take accountability and ask tough questions of the council. And, you know, when things don't look right or don't smell right, then we need to say, hey, what's going on here? Can you give me a better explanation of that? And so, you know, it's incumbent upon us, too. And I think, you know, you guys have all taken ownership in this. And, you know, we had some tough budget conversations last spring and, you know, forced the conversation back for a second night. That's never happened, you know? And then we made some decisions that weren't in line with the administration's recommendations. And so we held the line on, we're not going to move forward until we get some more clarification and have more challenged answers. But I will say for this council or any future council, you know, we need to ask harder questions and be more engaged and involved in this process and make sure that the numbers are accurate and right because we are responsible to the community and our citizens for the resources that they're allocating to us. And so I appreciate, you know, citizens' participation in the process as well and caring enough to come here and engage in the process and talk to us and have, you know, in-depth questions. You know, not everybody cares as much as you guys did, and so I appreciate your willingness to be here tonight and actually sitting down with the administration and asking those more tough questions, too, as we all have throughout this entire process. These are not the only conversations we've had. You know, as an association, we meet twice a month, or as a council body, meet twice a month, take action. And so the conversations you're seeing today are not the only conversations you see. You know, we've had multiple conversations over the course of the last nine months asking the tough, hard questions. So today, we're here where we're at, and this is the decisions we've got to move forward with. And I think what the administration is looking for is moving forward. How would we like to address moving into next year's budget, right, Mr. Smith? This is what we're talking about. Moving forward in the next year's budget, what are the recommendations or the guidelines, protocols that's going to allow you to develop a budget for 2024, 2025?
Right. And there will be, I mean, some of these decisions we need to implement in this year so that we can remove the need for a loan from the utility funds and so forth. So, I mean, some of them will impact this current budget here as well, but yes, that will set a broader guideline going forward in the future.
Are there other public comments? Any other questions from the council? All right, council, it's up to you. How would you like to proceed? And you have some recommended resolutions here this evening that we could make. You have some ordinances before you. All of them except for A are in regards to this conversation, right? So C, D, E, and F are all part of this conversation. So if you would like to start with C, how would you like to proceed with that? That is changing the dedication of certain funds and franchise fees to the Street Reserve Fund. Mr. Smith, what is this one in regards to?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm just noting, some of the proposed ordinances discussing tonight in regards to those fees don't discuss, for example, I don't see here any discussion of a police staffing fee. Would that be potentially something we would be discussing at a future meeting? Is it just not on the spice agenda? No, that's included in Resolution 2302, the master fee resolution.
Okay.
Updating.
Part of that.
Rather than its own, okay.
Other questions, council? Are you okay with us proceeding with the next item? Okay. Resolution 2304, Mr. Smith?
Yes, so this is the resolution that would reduce the transfer of franchise fees to the street fund to 10%. Currently, they're at 33%. And from an annual basis, this would increase the money in the general fund by $340,000 and decrease the street maintenance budget by the same amount.
So is this, you know, this is 2304. So this would reduce from 33% to 10%?
3%.
And that's an indefinite number until the council chooses to change it at some point?
Correct. It doesn't have to stay that way, just like you're, like it's proposing you change it tonight, it could be proposed to change again.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Other questions from the council? Any public comment on Resolution 2304? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2304 on the spot on record?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Verone, that we adopt Resolution number 2304 and remain upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, 6-0. Ordinance number 2351, increase the transient room tax and modify exemptions. Mr. Smith?
Okay, here we go. So this was, this is an ordinance that would propose the rate move from 8% to 9%. It would become effective April 1st, 2024, and that's because we collect this tax on a quarterly basis, and hotels pay, and this would give them a chance to prepare for that. And annually, it would be an increase of $100,000 to the general fund. There's also some language in there that clarifies how we treat vacation rentals. This is something that just came to our attention as we were going through on some other, on some other issues, and so we added it to that, to this ordinance at this time.
So the clarification on the vacation rentals is they are now also?
Yeah, they were already included, but this is clear that you can, there's, if you don't do it for seven days or less a year, then you are exempt, but if you do it for more, then you fall under this ordinance.
Any council comments?
How will that be tracked?
How will that what?
How would, how would that be tracked?
We would, I mean, we would be keeping track through our, through the, through the addresses. I mean, basically, we had somebody come forward and want to comply, but it wasn't clear that they were obligated to comply. We have not actively tracked vacation rentals, but it's something we could start doing, but we don't actively track it right now. But this would allow someone who wants to comply, it's clear that they can comply and we can work with them.
So we have ordinances on the books that say if you are a vacation rental home, you're supposed to let the city know, and you're also supposed to yourself report, right?
Yes.
And so, yeah, it's an honor system, for the most part. Low is not going down, calling every vacation rental and saying, hey, are you rented this week? So there is an honor system in that process. There are certain companies, though, that we could hire.
Yes.
To go out and do that for us for a fee.
Yeah, and we could do an audit, you know, they could help us do an audit of that, see what's out there, see if it's worth it, you know? But we haven't done that up to this point, just because when we've done, when we've looked, there's not a large number that are functioning.
Not like a Bend or Sun River or something like that that's got a large percentage of people.
Coastal cities.
Other questions, council? Public comment? Okay. May I request first reading the ordinance be read by title only and calls for a roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Tubbey?
Ordinance number 2351, an ordinance amending Section 112.04 Sub A of the Hermiston Municipal Code by increasing the transient room tax to 9% and amending Section 112.13 Sub A Sub 3 by modifying the exemption for owner-occupied rentals.
Thank you, Mr. Tubbey. May I request that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting, that the second reading be by title only and calls for a roll call?
Roll call. Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Tubbey?
Second reading by title only, ordinance number 2351, an ordinance amending Section 112.04 Sub A of Hermiston Municipal Code by increasing the transient room tax to 9% and amending Section 112.13 Sub A 3 by modifying the exemption for owner-occupied rentals.
Thank you, Mr. Tubbey. I would now take a motion that ordinance number 2351 be adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by city council.
So moved to second.
Been moved by Counsel Verone, seconded by Counselor McCarthy, that we adopt ordinance 2351 and become effective 30 days after adoption by city council. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. McCarthy, that's why I have number one spot.
I was reading.
I'm sorry. I know it's new tonight, so I give you a lot of grace. It's not like grace. All right, ordinance number 2352, adopting a business license fee. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so this ordinance would institute a business license fee. In the ordinance, it allows the fees to be adopted by resolution. So adopting this ordinance doesn't adopt this fee structure, but I thought we would want to talk about it at the same time, so I just brought it up here. This is the language that is in the master fee resolution, master fee schedule, but will be later on the agenda. So what we have proposed is a tiered system, tiered in two different ways, one based on the number of employees, but also based on whether you have a permanent location within the city or, or you're doing business and you don't have a permanent location within the city. And so there's a little bit of a benefit to having a permanent location as far as the business license goes, but there would be an 85 or $100 base fee, and that's up to five employees. And then the base plus either 15 or $20 per employee, and then that's for 6 to 49. And then the third tier is 50-plus employees with a cap at $1,000 or $1,200.
Mr. Smith, is that a net number? I mean, as far as like annual revenues, $100,000? There's obviously some costs included in this, right? So staffing costs, paper costs, invoice costs, non-return costs?
Yeah, I mean, mostly, we, we are comfortable that we can implement this without additional staff. And so we have factored staffing costs as a net. We have looked into some of the software that we could buy a different module from our current provider that, you know, that it would only impact that by about $5,000 a year for that software, and then whatever paper costs and postage costs at that point.
Counsel Verone?
Yes, sir. In regards to your, to the next line down underneath that, the construction projects.
Yes.
Construction projects, would that be, would that cover an overall, you know, it's like in housing development is a construction project, or is that like per house, per, per structure?
It would be like if a, if a builder was doing the whole, the whole subdivision, they would do that for that project.
Okay, so that would be, that's per project?
Correct.
Okay. And that would be, that would be levied only on a business that's, is, is turned out as a business?
Yeah, it wouldn't be like if somebody's building their own home. That, that's not their business to build.
Okay, thank you.
So if I understand this right, as a business owner, right, and I live in town and I have a permanent location, I pay 85 bucks base. The first five employees are included.
Correct.
So if I have 16 employees, for the next 11, times 15 bucks, I'd add that on there. So for me, it's going to cost me about 250 bucks a year-ish.
Right.
Okay. Got it. Other questions? Counsel Verone?
I just wanted to thank the administration for going back to the drawing board. I had a lot of citizens come up to me and tell me about the business license fee being just not equitable, and this makes a lot more sense at the end of the day. Is everyone going to be happy about it? Maybe not, but is it more fair? I believe so. There's a lot of mom-and-pop businesses that are under five employees, so I appreciate the structure, and if we need to dive into it a little bit more, that's fine, but this is a much better product than the last.
And, you know, my intention always was for this kind of a tier, I tried to always say an average of 250, and may not have always been clear on that, but, yeah, that was always to not, every business would be the same. So thank you.
Counsel Peterson?
Whereas I believe that this is a good starting point, having an ordinance that we're going to pass with the, this is what a possible, you know, structure might look like. It seems like we should have a firmer grasp of what it is actually going to look like. And, you know, because like, from what I've been hearing, it's not a very, it was one of the least popular of the actions we could have taken, and now to be rolling it out without saying, but here's what the businesses are going to get out of it, without even having anything to offer besides, well, it's an equitable way of, of taxing, without saying, and here's what businesses will get as an aspect of gaining this license. I, I think that we are offering a tax without offering a service that comes as a result of that tax, besides just being within the city. And to say that we're going to pass the ordinance and then here's, here's a possible deal. I think we should have a saying, this is what it's going to look like, at the same time, because to me, it just seems a little blank check-ish.
Well, the reason that it's structured this way is we, we, in, in a lot of fees, our parks and rec fees, others, it says in the ordinance that those will be adopted by resolution. And so that's why I show you this, that this is the language that's in the resolution. And so that's why I show you this, that this is the language that's in the resolution. If you only adopted the ordinance tonight and then turned down the resolution, then there would be no fee. There would be a business license ordinance, but there would be no fee. So in that sense, it's not really a blank check. This is what you've set up. I also hear the comment about, you know, the value, you know, the way those, basically, the business license fee, because we haven't had one for so long, forever, the, you know, most of the time, the reason you pay it is to have the privilege of operating business within the city and receive the protections that the city offers. I know that doesn't sound great when they've been doing it without one. And so it's a little hard to sell, but that's usually how it's structured. But sure, I mean, there are some things we can work on and try to help provide information and allow the, you know? But, you know, based on comments earlier tonight, maybe they won't see the value in some of those things that we can offer, but we can try to do that.
And to your Council Peters' point, it's not necessarily a service-oriented fee. What we heard from the constituents is they wanted a broad-spectrum fee across multiple members of our community. And that was visitors, our business community, and our constituents, right? That was the most, more than fifty percent, I believe, supported that concept. This is a way of generating revenue from our business community, right? So this is kind of meeting that target or that goal that they contribute to the, in addition, just like the residents, to help solving the problem. That's the way I look at it. Yes, Mr. Permer?
Just, I know it says within city limits, but somebody asked me, so I want to put it on record that we have an answer. If a business physical location exists outside of Hermiston proper, would they not be subject to these fees?
Right, as long as they're not.
But within the urban growth country?
Right, so if they're not doing business in the city, so somebody, for example, may have their location outside of the city limits, but their employees come into the city every day and do business, then they would be required to have a business license. Contractors is the easiest kind of example to think about in that way. But others, you know, maybe delivery business or other things might have a similar type of a situation. So if they're a retail location and they're located outside the city, they would not be required to have this business license.
Second question, just want to clarify, full-time equivalent employees. I had somebody asking me whether or not owners slash co-owners would qualify into that minimum number. For example, let's say there's a husband-wife couple who have five employees, would they be subject to eighty-five dollars or the additional two fifteens? I know people aren't going to care.
Like a vocal small?
There's a definition for how you come up with the...
Actually, that wasn't.
Say somebody who's an optometrist.
I already used mine as an example.
Say a Jew.
My understanding, the past four-year point regardless of that, owners have not qualified as employees, but that was on a broader spectrum. Outside of city.
I'll have to, I don't know the answer off the top of my head and can't find the paragraph that I was looking for, so I... You can ask me to wait, now you can wait, or?
I would prefer.
Okay.
Council Harder?
What about the administration of this business license and enforcement of this? I guess I'm not quite sure how this would work. I mean, is that going to involve business staff?
Again, this is one where we've, our current plan would be not to add staff to do this. But we would be, you know, we have acts through our utility billing. We would know what your commercial accounts, which are not, we can start with that and work from there. That's also, we've talked to some neighboring cities, that's how they do it with new businesses, is they come in and sign up for commercial water or sewer, utility accounts, then they can, then they also enlist them with business license and those types of things. So we will be, you know, another reason that we put effective the first of January next year is so we can have a better plan and how we're going to go forward with that. But we think from talking to some of the other cities that we can move that forward with our existing staff.
First year might be a little cumbersome, right? Might require some additional time and resources, but after that should be more simplified.
I think it's good that it's not until next year. Because we really don't know how many businesses we actually have.
Council Permer, you have another question?
It was in regards to like a business similar to, say, the waste transfer. They have, they have so many employees. Are we, how do we, how do we quantify the number of employees that are inside the city to create that, that cost? You know, is, you know, how is that going to be?
And that's where I was looking for the same paragraph, and so let me, I'm going to have to...
Well, you know, as a business owner, there are certain surveys I have to fill out for state fees and state licensure. And they ask the question on there, how many employees do you have that are in your business? So I think there'll be some sort of, you know, honor system as part of this. You know, obviously, I could always lie and say I only had five when I got sixteen. But, you know, if there was any sort of investigation or something, I don't know if there's a, you know, fine or a fee attached to it. But, you know, part of that will probably be, you know, sanitary disposal, how many people do you actually have that actually do business inside the city versus you matilla or stamping?
Right, and there was, there was a way to calculate that based on how many, how much time they spend in the city versus in other locations. So I'd be happy to table this and we'll come back with answers to these questions.
Council Broom, I do have a further question.
Yeah, Council McCarthy, is this decision on whether it's the co-owners are included in the number going to impact your decisions?
It would. It could, well, it could, I would like to. But I do have another question.
Just curious, a business that hires almost exclusively part-time wouldn't be subject to, well, let's say beyond five, would necessarily be subject to the additional licensing fee?
Well, I mean, there's a way to come up with what a full-time equivalent is, so two part-times are a full-time. And so that's the determination of the count.
Thank you.
Other questions today?
Do you need a motion to table this?
Or is motion to proceed, whichever you would like.
I'd make a motion to table this until further information can be brought forward.
Second?
Motion to table ordinance number 2352 adoption this evening, been moved by Council Permer, seconded by Council McCarthy. Roll call?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Motion passes 51.
Okay, so we'll bring it up next meeting, potentially?
Yes.
Okay. So can we move on to resolution 2302?
Yes.
Okay. Updating the master fee schedule for various fees. Mr. Smith, in that fee schedule, though, is the business license included in there?
Yes, so...
That portion potentially wouldn't be adopted?
Right, we could potentially have an amendment
Okay.
That could be included in the original. Okay, so this is a mixture of a couple of things. One, with a master fee schedule, we try not to bring it to you kind of every month and update a different fee in a different department. And so we're trying to get on an annual basis with the number of these fees. So we have, we are working to stay in the right competitive at the airport at hangar rental fees. And so there's an adjustment to the hangar rental fees. And then also it is adding an additional hangar rental fee for the new hangars that will be built later this year. And so that fee will be in place when those are available to be rented. Then across the parks and rec offerings, aquatic center, community center, festival street, Harkenrider Center, and then various park fees are all been adjusted based on kind of inflation and other changes. Some have been eliminated as we've changed how we approach those activities. Then EOTech, there's been just some adjustments in some of those fees. We also are updating the resolution to reflect some fee changes for our services to sanitary disposal. And then also public transit or taxi cab fees, bus fees. And the street department fees for the swale alterations that we've been doing. We've had a year of those under our belt and know a little better what that costs. And so updating those fees to more accurately reflect that. And then these are the fees that are related to the budget discussions that we've had. So with the business license fees, those could be, you could remove those. But the update to the planning and zoning fees, and we can, if you'd like, take a look, that's on page thirty-two is where those start on the fee resolution, and it shows what they were and what they are proposed to be. And then this adds the law enforcement staffing fee on page thirty-four of the resolution, or of the schedule. And then also, just because we're trying to have a one-stop shop of where fees and taxes are available to businesses, this includes just showing what action you just took on the TRT. Though this would, what's in the ordinance is what's effective, but this is just enough to make, keep the public informed. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Morgan to talk about the sewer and water laws.
Yeah, so I already spoke about this with the Public Infrastructure Committee this evening, so for some of you, it'll be a little bit redundant. But so with regard to the water and sewer utility rates, the council for the past six years has engaged in annual rate adjustments. That comes from 2017, when council adjusted the methodology for calculating water and sewer utility rates. The direction was a desire to adjust those rates annually rather than waiting five, six, seven, eight, nine years and having, you know, really large adjustments as they come up. Additionally, at that time, the justification for doing that was to shift to a pay-as-you-go-all, which requires building up cash reserves so that we're not taking out debt. For the vast majority of our projects that we do, still may take out some debt for really large projects. But building up reserves, making sure that we're managing those as we go along. Additionally, adjusting them on an annual basis, the intent really is to provide customers with stable and predictable rates. Again, that gets to not putting them off for five, six, seven years and then doing them in one large update. And then additionally, what council has used over the past number of years is to adjust rates consistent with inflation specific to the construction industry. And we use the Engineering News Records Construction Cost Index. Many cities across the state as well as across countries use that as their inflation gauge, very similar to the Consumer Price Index. But this is looking at just costs associated things like lumber, concrete, steel, those types of things that impact the construction industry. Generally follows the same trajectory as the CPI, but the numbers may be slightly different. But so that's what we use as the ENR's Construction Cost Index. Additionally, then, in 2022, we recognized that as a result of significant inflation coming out of COVID, we were looking at a retroactive adjustment for the coming year, looking at inflation having been a little over seven percent. And so council, recognizing that long-term inflation is definitely going to be coming back down, chose to take a policy of averaging out those annual adjustments using the previous three years or just the previous year's inflation numbers. And so that smoothes out spikes, again, provides the rate payers with some stability and makes it easier for planning purposes. So we did that the past two years, and so the challenge with doing that is that it moderates things on the front end when you're experiencing strong inflation. But then you have to, you know, continue to see that number show up as you work your way through those averages. And so when we look at 2023, as of December, construction inflation has significantly moderated over the past twelve months. So we're down to just a little over two and a half percent in that index. But we're still experiencing, if we do the three-year average, the inflation from 2021 and 2022. So if we did the three-year average, then we would actually be recommending to implement a water and sewer rate adjustment of a little over five percent rather than the two and a half percent. So the proposal before you this evening is to simply adjust water and sewer utility rates by 2.58%. So that is equal to what the inflation was just for 2023. Again, inflation moderated, and again, the overriding justification for making that proposal just be last year's was to make room for that law enforcement staffing fee, which would be a five-dollar fee added to all the water and sewer utility fees across the city. So the impact to the median water and sewer customer, again, I always talk just in terms of the median customer because when we're talking percentages, when it turns into a dollar amount, it depends, it changes whether or not you're a really, really large water user or a very small water user. So this pertains just to the unit rates that people pay when they're consuming water or they're sending us water. So when averages out over the course of twelve months on a monthly basis for that median residential customer, a 2.58% increase would increase their monthly bill by two dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's compared to, if we did the three-year average at 5.16%, it'd be an increase of 5.77. Of course, with economics and finance, there's no such thing as a free lunch. So what we would be losing or the person who's ultimately paying for making that margin available for the law enforcement staffing fee is from the utility fund. So this would result in, compared to if we were doing the three-year rolling average like we had previously and did the 5.16% increase, doing the two and a half percent would result in about $273,000. doing the 2.5% would result in about $273,000 per year in less revenue directly to the utility fund so that we can make room for the law enforcement staffing fee. And then this table just kind of looks at what the net impact of that would be. So you can see that column for the proposed 2.58%. If for the median customer, that's a little over $3 an increase. You add on the law enforcement staffing fees. And the total impact to that customer comes out to a little under $8 total. So that's the utility rate adjustment proposal.
Then we're open for questions, comments on all of the fees.
So, you know, we did have this conversation earlier this evening in the Public Infrastructure Committee. So Mark, what did North First Street cost us as far as infrastructure, not counting road?
Yeah, so we're still adding up the bills, but it was originally budgeted about $800,000 for just replacing the water main between Hermiston Avenue and L.
And that's not lift stations and all the other challenges we had with that project?
Yeah, so depends on which, where you're defining the line on projects. So we had lift station number three when we went underneath the railroad tracks. That cost about $1.4 million to do that project. Lift number six was located at the intersection of Ridgeway and First. That project was about $400,000. And then the water main was about $800,000.
Matsumon?
Yes.
So, you know, I think one of the greatest things this council has done in the last 10 years has looked at the cost of our infrastructure. And I look at infrastructure as economic development. It's the way the city helps businesses be successful. In a community that has successful infrastructure, that business or community can grow around it. And I think that's where Hermiston's had its great success probably over the last 20 years. Because we've chosen to invest in infrastructure. We went through and analyzed every single pipe, every single sewer and water pipe, and found out age and status of those and then put them in a master plan to replace them so that we didn't have situations like Flint, Michigan, where you have failing infrastructure or bad water going to your constituents. The last thing I think any of us wants is unsafe or unhealthy infrastructure. And that goes for just not water, but also wastewater and utility, or electrical utilities and roads. You know, a successful community is a community that invests in itself. And we chose as a council to make sure that we appropriately looked at the long-term costs, averaged those out over time, and what was it going to cost to pay for those. If we cut this fee now, at $270,000 a year, and if we are, you know, saving up for a lot of these projects over time, that's 2.7 million in 10 years and 5.4 in 20 years. Not including costs of interest that we would save putting those into an investment account. So those are, you know, a couple North First Street projects that we wouldn't have been able to do that are valuable and important to this community and its future development. And as we age as a community, we're over 100 years old, there's a lot of those within the underground infrastructure that we need to relayer, be responsible for. I don't think saving constituents $3 a month is the right way that we're going to continue supporting the structure here in this community. And I think, you know, we agreed a couple of years ago to lessen the burden by putting the three-year average in place because it was coming out of COVID, trying to be cognizant of what people were dealing with and trying to be respectful of that. But, you know, offsetting, you know, the investments that we need to make in infrastructure, I think is the wrong way to handle this. If we're going to put a public safety fee out there, let's do the $5 on top of the infrastructure cost that we've already moderated and agreed to change that fee to so that we stay on track with the investments that we need to make to keep this a healthy city. Other comments on resolution 2302? Yes, Councilman?
I am not for the residential increase to, I think it's $40.67 rate. I will go, I go along with the commercial one. Commercial businesses, they just pass it off. And what a project they're doing is not passed off to consumers anyway. So they're not going to lose anything. With the residential, the bill is already kind of high in my opinion. I think we should leave it at $39.65. And your calculated monthly usage rate? I don't know if that, you want to go up from 3.9 to 3? I don't know, I don't understand that, like the 3.5. It's $3.
What page?
Yeah.
Sorry, about that, page 37? Where's, so it says a sewer department, page 37? I don't know, the second part is going to change from.
111 in your back.
Yeah, so when we changed the calculation method, particularly on the sewer side of things back in 2017, that's where we began. Previously, we only charged a base fee. We didn't charge a consumption fee. And so now that we do it based off of people's actual amount of sewage that they send to us, based off their wintertime usage, that's when we made the residential and the commercial customers essentially the same because they're sending us the same amount. If they're a business, say they're a car wash or something like that, they're likely going to be purchasing a lot more water and then that would scale up what they're sending to us. Or maybe if they're a hotel or something like that, they have significantly more water consumption, significantly more units, that type of thing. So that's why it's structured that way. For the purpose is mainly of tracking on our end. We still break it out by commercial versus residential. But it's been very useful to have them stay exactly the same over time.
Can you tell me what the second part is for the calculated monthly usage rate?
It's going from 3.40 to 3.49.
Okay.
Per thousand gallons of water.
Okay, so on the, again, I will reiterate that I think that the residential should remain what it is currently and that the commercial goes up to your new current part.
Okay. Other comments on the master fee schedule? Yeah, Councilmember?
It is really expensive to pay for all the things that we have to pay for. I think the most striking moment of public infrastructure that I had was when they removed one of the big mains out in the first place. And they showed that to the public. It was a big piece of rust. I don't think it should be even called iron anymore at that point. And so to the mayor's point, it's increasingly important to make sure that we have services that sustain and that work for the future. I look to be here for the next 20, 30, 40 years. So I really hope our citizens, our constituents down the line appreciate the investments that the council is making. Because at some point, if we don't, if we don't pay for it now, we're going to have to pay for it later. And it only gets expensive more as it kick down, uh, kick down the road. And so it's definitely not easy, but it's something years ago, we did want to reduce the burden on the taxpayers and just try to maintain the average. At the end of the day, we got our average. And I understand it's still a little high, right? And so we set a course for this because we knew that this three-year average was going to keep us steady, physically put in balance. And so as stuff it is, I believe that that's the right way to make. Especially seeing the average difference. I understand in reality, it might look a little bit different per customer. Every person's situation's different. But if we're looking to make a difference now and in the future, I think we have to, we have to make a tough decision. And I think that's going to be making sure that we have adequate funding for our water and sewer.
Mr. Morgan, in this master fee schedule, does it identify the percentage increases this year on a person's wastewater and water bill?
You mean for what we implemented last year?
Like so this, the difference between what you're talking about, 5.18% and 2.89%?
Yeah, so what's presented in the master fee schedule would be the 2.58%.
Okay. So if we were to amend that, we would have to say we approved this fee schedule with the original base water or the.
Probably should say with the 5.16%.
Just to be clear. Well, the comment is. Other questions from the council?
So earlier, Mr. Smith and I had a conversation. And one of the questions that I had would be, you know, we talked about the median use of water. But I mean, you know, how I would, what I would like to see is how many of our ratepayers are under the 15,000 gallon per month usage as opposed to over? Because, you know, in looking at the, in looking at the numbers, you know, it's with our base rates, it's, we're only going up $1.90 for, for the base rates between the two, for the under 15. And how many are actually using over the 15,000? Because if that's, you know, that $15,000, if that's, you know, if that's the tipping point for a lot of people, because that's a big jump from water usage, you know, from your average water usage to your, your high level where you're charging a lot more for the water. I think we need to take a look at that rate. Because if we are, if, if a lot of our, our ratepayers are using more than the 15,000 gallons, then, because, you know, I came over here and did a little, did a little bit of math and it's, it's, it's not that big of a jump between, you know, it's, it's 52, you know, if they use the full 15,000 gallons or on the sewer, it's $52.35 as a raise as opposed to $51 a month. So I would like to, you know, I'd like to see how much, how many of our ratepayers are above that level. And, you know, maybe we need to put an additional tier in there. Yeah, and I actually did quite a bit of work on that here a number of years ago where I broke it down by percentile. And yes, I looked at each of the counselors. And yes, one of the top 10 users is sitting up there. Anyway, but I think it was, it was pretty insightful to actually go back and look and see, basically, you know, to show, you know, what does really the 75th percentile customer, what does that look like? And particularly, it changes a lot during the month, you know. So in the summertime, the median residential customer is using about 30,000 gallons per month. So that means half of the customers in the city are using at least 30,000 gallons of water. The other, when you look at the number of users that are using less than that 30,000 amount, a significant number of those that get counted toward calculating where that exact median person is are registering exactly zero water usage just because a lot of those, maybe they're dormant accounts, maybe they have turned off. There's a lot of them, you know, there's a couple hundred of them. So it's really interesting once you start digging into those numbers. And, you know, I come share it with you. I think it's, it's insightful to see what those numbers look like. Yeah, I would, I would like, I would like to see that because, you know, that does, that does, you know, excuse the numbers a bit if, you know, your, your average is, if you've got 25 people that are using zero and this many that, you know, that, that echoes into that number. So, you know, I mean, having the zero, having the zero sum in there is, is, I don't want to say deceiving, but it's not, it's not, it doesn't help.
Yeah. Well, Council Premier, weren't you on the Public Infrastructure Committee?
No.
No, you weren't. Okay, so we had a lot of conversation around the original design, architect of the public infrastructure fee. And we spent a long time about what does a typical homeowner, you know, family of four use in water weekly, monthly, annually? And making sure that they're being protected. So this fee schedule was purposely more difficult than a high water use. To try and encourage conservation and try and use less water because water is a scarce resource in our area.
I agree.
So we're trying to recommend or suggest that that people find ways to reduce their water usage. And I think that number has significantly gone down. And I think it's like a large number.
Yeah, I think, so it's interesting. And again, it's just been a while since I've done a lot of the data analysis. But that first year, those first couple of years, I think we saw during our peak summer months, I think we saw our peak summer water consumption drop about 20%. And I think a lot of that had to do with, you know, folks just weren't, the true value of that resource wasn't really being paid for them, or paid by them. And so a lot of folks were just simply, you know, they turned on their sprinklers in April, weren't the exact same, and then shut it off in October. And so I think we see, saw a huge amount of savings in the amount of water that folks are using. Since that time though, we've added almost 800 accounts. And so we're back up to where we were before in terms of total amount of water use, but we're using it a lot more efficiently per customer out there. So again, as the mayor said, that was the entire point of structuring it that way. So it's an inclining rate so that if folks want to choose to use more water, they can do that. And conversely, setting it up that way also allows the folks who may be much more price sensitive, they can scale it back and say, you know what, I'm only, you know, I'm not going to water my lawn or I'm, you know, I'm only going to use the absolute bare minimum. And that rewards them much more significantly than if we had a more averaged rate that spread it. If we increased the bottom tier and brought down the upper tier, it makes it more impactful dollar-wise for folks to engage in conservation that way.
Councilman?
I would like to, as I was saying before, I would like to see the residential stay the same and just the commercial go up. Now, we've talked about infrastructure and how important that is. I'm pretty sure all of us understand that. And making hard decisions, I'm pretty sure we'll all understand that people have to make hard decisions as well. Last month, my water was $44. I'm one person in a very small house. And I do remember, I was on the council, saying council, but I do remember coming to meetings and seeing the pipes. And I understand that. I also remember people coming in that had a single person working in the family with three and four kids and how, and I'm sure everyone remembers that. And it was packed out in here with the raise, that increase that we had back then. And it affected a lot of people. Not everybody's making over $100 a year. I'm not, I don't wish I was there. I don't, you know. I can afford it. I can afford the $10.77, $10.77, says it, we did it that way. I can afford that. But I'm not going to try to, I think it would hurt people. I think it would hurt a lot of people. I think it would hurt seniors. Talk to seniors and it's sad when someone tells you that, you know, I go here to Harkenrider Tuesday and Thursday because it's $5. And eat half their food and pack it, or they have to take home, so they'll have dinner. I go to other places where they have a, serving lunch or something to eat because it's a discount for the seniors. I'm not talking about regular restaurant. I'm talking about other services that are being provided. And they can't afford it, you know. And we have to think about those people as well. And that's just where my heart is. And I'm pretty sure that, I don't believe it's a trying to hurt anybody deliberately. That's not what I'm saying because I don't believe that. I don't believe anybody up here would want to do that. But we have to consider, you know, somebody says, well, $5 is not that much. I remember when I was working, I wished I had an extra 20 bucks and had to go borrow it to get gas, for gas to get to work. There are people still living like that. There are adults that are taking their families and they're making 15 bucks an hour. There are adults that are taking their families and they're making fifteen bucks an hour. And then there's other people that are making, you know, forty, fifty. I know people making fifty something, however, it just won't hurt them, you know. But we need to consider those that, you know, if we have this increase, it'll be packed out. Again, with people saying that, you know, I, I remember this one lady, it just touched my heart, who said, I now, my children and I now have to take a bath in the same bathtub. And because they couldn't afford the increase. So we're going to have to consider those people as well. And so, commercial like those, they, they'll just pass that along to the, whatever, to the customers that are using real facilities. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, other comments?
Sorry for interrupting you there, there was the last two, there wasn't, I'll take twelve comments. I'd like to point out that while the top numbers up there say 2.58 and 5.16, that bottom number is eight and a half percent to almost 12% increase on your ratepayers. And that, that's a big number. And that will go into the bottom line of the people that Ms. Lynn was talking about. It's not two and a half percent, it's not 5.16. I'm not disagreeing with the five dollar fee, I want to clarify that. I'm, I'm saying that this is going to impact people at that bottom level. And those aren't the true numbers when you're looking at the percentage. It's, it's that bottom dollar, and you need to factor in all of these numbers that we're considering at enough, because people are going to have to pay for it. Yep, those who are in the bottom, they're going to struggle with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Okay. So, Ms. Smith, you've heard a couple potential modifications to the fee schedule. One would be putting a pause on the business license on this schedule. So that could be a recommendation, right? And so if we adopt this as it's presented, for resolution 2302, adopting the master fee schedule, there would have to be some amendments, or what's the right word?
Yeah.
Amended.
We were just trying to talk about the best way, if someone wanted to propose amendment, would just move to adopt with X, Y, Z amendment.
Okay.
Whatever, and if it's two or three, whatever that person wanted to propose, amend vote on that. And now, then if that doesn't pass, you go back and try again on some amendment or whatever.
Ms. McCarthy?
So, so it would sound like at least the business license one, because we're tabling that, would, would need to be amended.
Right.
So just for the purpose of appropriate language, if we were to make a motion, we're just saying, adopt as proposed, but without, but with the amendment of not introducing the license fee. With the business license fee. But that could come up then at another time, which we would again update the master fee schedule.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Uh, no, I just wanted to understand in case additional amendments needed to be.
Okay. Who's going to take a crack at it?
I just have a question.
Okay.
If, in this scenario, if, let's just say we do the 2.58, at some point, I guess I want to understand, in the future, is there going to be a much higher rate increase then for future customers by postponing this?
Who wants to take a shot at it?
We, I mean, I think we would be working under the current policy, which is take a three-year average. It takes out the seven percent, you know, the next year, if we go back three years, you take out the seven percent. So no, I mean, unless someone directed us to, I mean, right now, that wouldn't be the case. We would not be looking at a larger increase outside of what inflation is and measured by that cost index.
Well, that, that's not necessarily true, because tonight we're making an arbitrary change. The council could make an arbitrary change.
That's what I'm saying, unless we were directed to, otherwise, staff would be bringing just the, based on the current policy.
So to Councilmember Broom's point, Mr. Morgan, when you put down 2.58%, that significantly lowers the three-year average. So that two-hundred-seventy-three thousand dollars, was that included in that two-hundred-seventy-three thousand dollars for the rolling three-year average?
Yeah, so that two-hundred-seventy-three thousand dollars, that is taking the gross water in sewer, certainly from the sales of water and sewer services on an annual basis, it's about eleven point one million dollars per year, taking the margin between a 5.16% increase and a 2.58% increase, and applying that to that about eleven million dollars in total revenue. So that's where the lost revenue is, the difference that would be applied to those.
But that's a one-year.
Well, so that's where I, I would consider it to be an annual lost revenue, unless, as City Manager mentioned, you know, council will revisit these every year, you can choose to increase and make up for that in the future if you'd like. But if we are, say, you know, say you started out, median customer was a hundred dollars a month, if we've increased it by 2.58 this year, then when you come back to revisit it next year, you're going to be applying a percentage change to a hundred, two dollars and fifty-eight cents. So unless you make a larger percentage change next year, then that, you know, is going to be baked into what your rate is moving forward, so you will have been lost, you've lost out on that amount moving forward unless you choose to make up for it in the future. So that's how it turns into an annual loss.
So we've gone away from CPI number that we've talked about as the rolling average, and every year we're going to come back and make this arbitrary decision?
No, I mean, unless you provide us other, other feedback, I think this was a proposal, because one of the things that came through loud and clear in the, the public, polling and public feedback this past couple of months was, you know, being very sensitive to that public safety and law enforcement staffing fee, you know, adding that onto the utility bills. So making, trying to moderate that, we made this proposal to reduce the amount. It's a proposal, council could choose to take it either direction. If you'd like to revert back to the three-year rolling average, we can do that in the future. But I think the intention would be to continue to have it come back every year and have it based somewhat in that inflationary number.
I mean, I think we would, we would be looking at the three-year rolling average unless we had direction to go differently, which is, you know, but what I was saying is the seven percent large inflation number in 2021 would go off the three years, and we would have whatever next year's number is with the 2.58 and the five point something, which is the 2022 number.
So we wouldn't use the 2.58 as part of the average?
Sure, it would, it would be, because it's this year's number, or it's last year's number, it would be one of them, one of the three averaged.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, so are you including the five-dollar fee as part of that average? Is that what I'm understanding?
No.
No.
Okay.
And that's where, the way it was coming out, it sounded like that was, that was part of the, the reason why the average was changing, that, 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 that.
Well, see, if you look right here, you get 2021, the, the inflation for that year was 7.35%.
Right.
If we choose to go with 2.58 for this year, then that falls off, because now you look back, 2022 is 5.56, 2023 is 2.58, and whatever 2024 is becomes part of the average. That's all I was saying.
All right. So our actual number for the year 2021 was not 7.31?
Correct, these numbers are showing what the actual inflation rate was for those years, and so that's where it's showing. When we look back three years, we're looking at what the actual inflation rate was, not what we chose to.
That wasn't right, woman in number.
Right.
Okay.
Correct, it's, it's just the inflation number.
That makes more sense. So moving forward in this master fee schedule, the three-year rolling average is still part of that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Councilperson Peterson?
When looking at, you know, we're down on page thirty-seven, I mean, looking at the reduced utility rate, is that something that somebody has to apply for on an ongoing basis? Or are they able to get set into a, like, fee schedule where, you know, their rates?
They, they need to apply every year for that.
And do you know if the rate changes in order to, like, make up for whatever it is we do here? Like, so for example, if, like, you know, if it covers a certain percentage, or I'm trying to think of, like, the people that are more likely to be negatively impacted by the rate increase that might fall into that category, making sure that it's like we're not, you know, slicing off of the top of what, or what help they are getting? If you.
Yeah, so the, the reduced utility rate component there, for everybody to kind of give you an understanding, what we do is we take, we give folks who apply for it and are granted it, they get fifty percent off of their base charge. So that's what's charged, everybody regardless of their usage. The actual rate charged for their consumption is the same as everybody else, because, again, as I was mentioning earlier, you're more in control of that. You know, you could choose not to water your lawn if you have that, you know, lawn or those types of things. So it, it still gives folks the ability to control that aspect, but it cuts their base charge in half. I will mention, because we require folks to resubmit every year, because it's based off of income, and people's income can change, so this time of year we see renewal applications come through. We've had this program in place now for, I think, about three years. And so some folks start to get on it and regularly reapply. For, through the end of 2023, we had six customers on the program. So it's not a large number of folks that are availing themselves.
It's not, it's not available to them, that's just all that have applied. And is there a cap?
No, no, we talked about it, we didn't cap, but we didn't.
Okay, so a lot more people potentially could apply and get granted that.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Lynn?
Oh, yes, so when you say it's, it's fifty percent, you said taking off the base rate. So if the base rate is forty dollars, then what's being subtracted is twenty dollars, and their bill could be sixty bucks, so they could be paying like forty bucks or something like that, that's correct?
Right, they'd have to use quite good water to get to that point, but yes.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, I'm just curious, two-part question. How, if at all, are we making people aware of that program? And second, do, have we had, to your knowledge, any applications that have come in but have not met the requirements? And how many do you have?
Yeah, so mainly as far as how they become aware of it, there are a number of church-based groups that are aware of the program, you know, a lot of times they help folks with their utilities, so they're aware of the program. And then additionally, when folks come in and they're following behind on the bills, those types of things, our staff makes the folks available, or makes them aware that that option is available to them. The criteria is based off of the federal poverty guidelines, and so it scales based off of number of people in the household, and then that's also really why we require folks to resubmit every, annually, because incomes can fluctuate. There have been, you know, a number that have been rejected because they didn't meet the income requirements, their income was too high. Another point to make is the intention, I believe, when the council put this in place a number of years ago, was it's really not to, it's really to serve people who I would consider to be more permanently low-income, not necessarily people who are experiencing short-term fluctuations in their income. So we had one that I remember was, you know, one of the spouses lost their job, and so they came in and, you know, the other spouse asked, you know, can we get this reduced utility rate application? But there's nothing that says that the other spouse would go out and get another job three weeks later, and our staff isn't going to be constantly chasing those types of things. So it's really, you know, over the course of the previous year, you come in, you turn in your tax information. We do grant credit back at the beginning of the year. So it's really based off of what your income was for the course of an entire year. So we don't see a lot of folks that get rejected, but there are some.
And just, and in your little back, the early two thousands cap goes up, you know, within, and it saved my winter, I mean, the amount that I was able to get, you know, I paid my winter bills, like, because they credited my account, and I was in the collect son for, and, you know, that, and all that, really good electric, good light bulbs for all winter. So I think it's partly about getting the information out there. And then there's also TAMP for those that do have, you know, income shortages for a small amount of time. So having outreach workers, I think, would be very beneficial in those cases. Been through all the works, so.
Thank you for that, that's fine. Does somebody want to take a shot at this? It's getting late, and I know Councilmember Broom is looking at his watch, and he's got a timeline that he's got to keep to, and so I want to make sure we get this done tonight. So does somebody want to take a shot at this? Yeah, Councilmember?
I would like to motion to amend the sewer department monthly.
You're going to need to make a motion to update the master fee schedule for various fees.
Okay, what he said.
With the amendment.
What he said. And to leave the residential fee as it is currently, and the commercial fee to go up, to what you're suggesting.
And the amendment?
And the amendment.
For the business license fee, we will table till.
Okay, that part of it too much. Okay, yeah.
That part too. Mr. Tully, does that work? Do you need to restate it? I can restate it.
Oh, yes, please, please state it. Hearing the motion in that form, it may be easier to do one amendment at a time. So to vote per amendment, two changes to the proposed fee schedule.
Now you've really got this.
Yeah, so how are we going to vote on SIP and amendment if we haven't approved master fee schedule?
How about we, how about, how about this as a, as a suggestion? Then we, here's my, here's my amendment.
Wait, you have an initial.
Here's, here's my, here's my interpretation.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Okay. And so do we have any sort of second to that? I'm not seeing a second, so it's going to die. So now you can make a.
Now, okay, how about, how about, how about this one be a little bit cleaner, then we can, we can fix it a little bit later. About, I make a motion that we adopt the current fee schedule as, as proposed, the updated fee schedule as proposed, with the exception of, with the removal and tabling of the sewer and the business license until, to be, for those two to be updated later. Would that work?
Okay. Is there a second?
Sir?
Okay. A movement seconded, that we adopt the updated master fee schedule as presented, with tabling of the sewer department fee and the business license fee to a later date. Okay. Just, I just said sewer, you just decided to not change it? That's the whole sewer change. Okay. So motion of second, roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. Motion passes four to one, is that right? Four to, five to one, five, five to one, sorry, with Councilmember Broom and the absent, or, what? Negative. So next month, we will have to come back and review the sewer fees and talk about the business license. Yep, Councilmember Broom?
May I drop to me, I just want to clarify on that. I am a hundred percent in support of what we've done. I was just in the set of the two amended potions.
Yep.
I'm happily in support of what we got so far.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification. Well, that was complicated and cumbersome, but we got through it, so good job, council. Resolution number 2303, approving territory allocation agreement. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'll ask Mr. Rivera to address this.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Rivera, thanks for all of your patience and waiting.
Mr. Mayor of Council, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, we're going to talk about resolution 2303. Tonight, we're going to talk about Resolution 2303. This is approving a territory allocation agreement between Hermiston Energy Services and Umatilla Electric. This would supersede City Council Resolution 2208, that was passed in February of 2022, and this would also authorize myself as the HES general manager to sign on behalf of the city. So a little background on this, so this is the map of the city of Hermiston. Everybody have their orientation. The area that we're talking about tonight... Oop, go back one.
Stop pushing, let her control.
Where's your control?
Let Lily drive.
Okay. So the area that we're talking about with the proposed resolution is similar to the resolution that was passed. If we zoom into the area, Lily, will you advance? Okay, the area that we're talking about, just a reminder, this is a close-up to the former Cook property, our industrial property within the city limits. The state of Oregon has defined service territories, so on the map located, the red section would be Pacific Core Service Territory. The green would be Hermiston Energy Services, and the teal is Umatilla Electric Service Territory. Go ahead, Lily. So in early 2022, the city of UEC agreed to a customer allocation agreement of HES's service territory on County Tax Lot 4N-600 to allow UEC to provide service to its member via resolution. That tax lot, if you remember, straddled both UEC and HES's service territory with the vast majority of the lot residing in UEC's territory. After we looked into the options with the state about who would have the right to serve that, it was determined that UEC, because of the majority of the load was located in their service territory, would have the right to serve the load no matter what we did. So UEC proposed, and HES agreed to a customer allocation agreement. So that light box right there is within HES service territory, their industrial customer, they, which essentially said, we allow you to serve that customer within a portion of our service territory. So in 20, late 2022, an industrial customer requested service from HES and access a 50-average megawatts on the adjacent property. So to give you an idea of how much 50-average megawatts is, HES services our entire service. Peaks at about 26-average megawatts in the summertime, that's our highest, but over the year, it averages about 13. So when a customer comes in and says, we would like to, you know, substantially increase what you're doing as a utility, that's something that we really had to look into. This was requested in a service area that was entirely within HES's service territory, so we didn't have the issue we had before with two service territories, it's just HES. So due to the size of that request and the timelines they were looking for, for development, we determined as a risk analysis that we would not have the ability to serve the load, nor would we want to take on the amount of risk and cost for HES's customers. So we contacted UEC about providing service to that customer. UEC desired to serve its member, it's the same number that they served previously, but due to the amount of investment that would go into serving a customer of this size, they were no longer willing to do a customer allocation agreement on that property just for long-term infrastructure maintenance if anything changes. So they requested from us, and we agreed that it made more sense to permanently transport the service territory instead of doing a customer allocation agreement. So we again worked with Stole Reeves, we worked with them last time, they're a legal firm, firm out of Portland that specializes with PUC issues and utilities. We determined that the same ORS standard that applied previously is, also applies to this. It still needs to be approved by the PUC, but this allows us to actually make an agreement with Umatilla Electric. So going back, so tonight's resolution, the action I'm asking you to approve would be to remove the customer allocation agreement that you approved in February of 2022 and replace it with a new agreement that would transfer HES's service territory in the teal box to Umatilla Electric. So we both support replacing, removing the customer allocation agreement. If that service territory is entirely Umatilla Electric, it's not needed. And so for administrative reasons, because it's a city resolution, we would remove that and replace it. This, like I said, does require PUC approval. One of the provisions that we required of Umatilla Electric is to have a sunset clause. Let's say the industrial customer does not develop within, within three years of this agreement's effective date, then it would revert back to the customer allocation agreement on the current property that's under development, and it would retain HES service territory. So this decision tonight affects only one HES customer. This customer is in support of the agreement. And then another thing that we looked at that was a potential issue, if you can see down in the left-hand corner now, there's that small swath of green that would still remain HES service territory. And the reason why we did not include that was because we currently have customers there that are not part of this process. But Lily, if you go, this agreement, so the green highlighted line, that's our infrastructure that runs throughout this agreement, and it's currently in place today. So that still allows us, whether you approve this or not, this still allows us with easements and access to serve all of our existing customers. So like I said, the only customer that's affected is the customer making the request. For the large industrial load, no other customers would be affected by this. And this falls into alignment with Council Goal One, workforce development, attract industry and jobs. And I'd be open to any questions.
Thanks, Nate.
Yeah.
So the question I had is in regards to that property. So has the one customer we're talking about acquired all of that property inside that new food box?
Correct. They've acquired both the tax lots associated with that property.
So that whole state-sized piece of property is all owned by that same customer?
Correct.
And what does this look like from a revenue standpoint to the city versus how it'd be held on today?
So for revenue to the city, it has the impact of franchise fee revenue that would come in, and that would come in whether it was an HES customer or a UEC customer. So as far as money coming into the general fund, there's no effect. So there's no financial impact to this decision. It's just who has the responsibility of the service territory of serving that customer or member if Umatilla Electric has it.
What I'm hearing you say tonight, there's no way HES can serve that customer without putting some significant investment in putting our current system at risk because of the amount of outlay that we'd have to put out there?
It's more than just an outlay issue. Yes, the risk is significantly more than we would feel comfortable taking on, not only in the long-term management of the infrastructure, but it's also, you know, a real issue with the timeline. So the timeline, because Hermiston Energy Services doesn't own any transmission, we're a distribution cooperative only, it requires significant investment in getting transmission lines sited, additional infrastructure in the transmission lines coming into this area, and then also working with Bonneville Power Administration to get in their queue to get federal power into that, and that's a multi-year process waiting. And so if we tried to go on this alone, the customer most likely would choose a different site because we would never be able to name the timelines. And so it's both the timeline and a risk assessment and a cost that it just, it doesn't fit within what Hermiston Energy Services does well.
So, you know, keeping these jobs and this development, this still is being developed inside the city limits, inside our urban, our enterprise zone. And so we'd still retain all the value in this without, without potentially causing the developer to go to a different location because we couldn't meet the timeline that they're looking to develop.
Correct. And there was only one previous customer on, on the site previously, it was an irrigation account. The amount of revenue that came from that irrigation account didn't, didn't have, had minimal impact to the overall HES budget. So a decision like this doesn't negatively impact the HES members, whereas going in a different direction could significantly impact them on the risk assessment.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Council? Okay. Everybody's tired, or they want to go home? How about, thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Of course, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor of Council?
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to adopt Resolution 2303. Some second. Council Jerome?
Yes, sir.
Made the resolution to adopt approving territory allocation agreement, and I think it was kind of hard to second it, Resolution 2303. We'll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, 6-0. No other business, right, Mr. Smith?
Okay, committee reports. I've got two, and I'm going to make them super quick. Stepping Stones is moving on. Their project is doing good things. How about that? And Public Infrastructure, long meeting tonight, we talked a lot about what you already heard, plus got some updates on some other projects that may come in front of the city in the near future, but a lot of work going on in the Public Infrastructure Department.
Six, six, enough. Any other committee reports?
We almost had a UTEC, but we had it postponed, so we're going to try to meet the first Thursday of this upcoming. So I'll bring it back down.
Yeah, we did not have a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting in December, but we've had a couple of updates in regards to the skate park, which is having some communication with construction. It's causing us to delay the opening until about May-ish is when the recommend, no, not the recommendation, I got it wrong.
There's some PDA issues with the slope and leak points on the site pathways that are going around the skate park. And so until those are remedied, we cannot open. So we anticipate those will be done here in the next month.
Okay.
And a ribbon cutting will be in May. That's what, the four months out is what we're planning on. But as soon as we get the all-clear, take the gates down, that skate park's going to be open and ready for users.
And then we have a committee meeting this week. Great. Other, or other committee reports? Seeing none. Mayor's report, again, going to be very brief. Went to Wydenstown Hall, well-attended, good topics, conversation. We had a West End Mayor's and Managers Meeting, another great conversation, a lot going on in the west Umatilla County area. And then the only question I had, Mr. Smith, is can we get a Harkenrider Center update now that it's kind of transitioning over to public use and what that looks like in the future?
Yeah, we can. And we did adopt fees as we look to rent the space, so I'll give it Mr. Art's, and we'll have a report.
Let me see how that's all working and transitioning and how those conversations are going. You have any other council reports? No. Mr. Oh, youth advisors all had to go home and do homework proudly, go to bed so they could just get up from school. Mr. Smith?
Just one, I'd like to let the council know, some great news we got today. Umatilla County Housing Authority received $7.5 million to build a veterans' housing project in the city. So they're pretty excited about that. It's going to be on the property near Newport Park that they've had for a number of years. And so we're excited for them. We'll do what we can to help them kind of move that project along.
Could we invite them to kind of come and explain what that project looks like?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'll do that.
Awesome. And...
That's it, thank you.
We have upcoming...
Yeah, Gold Set.
Gold Set. Everybody's got it on their calendar, right? What are the dates, Lily? January 2nd?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five and twenty-six, right? Everybody's on the calendar? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
That's it, thank you.